So I'll turn it over to Andrew and we'll let him talk a little bit about what we found and kind of what we have on the west end of our community.
Okay, and I will go through the beginning of it very briefly that way we can just get to the recommendations that way so y'all can get out here in a timely. So what we'll do, we'll go quickly through the purpose of the study, steps and the recommendations and characteristics and get to recommendations and costs. So go ahead. So the purpose of the study was to identify short and long-term transportation enhancements along the study corridor which starts at the county line, Jefferson-Hamilton County line at West AJ Highway and goes east to West Morris Boulevard. And this document hopefully will give guidance to decision-makers regarding future projects. So the study steps, we had public participation, we had two workshops. One workshop was at first and we had some survey questions and asked people what they were concerned about with the corridor. Then after that, in December, we had another public workshop that's where we discussed our preliminary recommendations and got feedback from the public. Then we looked at, we analyzed the characteristics of the corridor. Mostly that's land use patterns, zoning, environmental elements and development conditions. Then we identified and evaluated the actual facilities. So we looked at existing deficiencies and existing conditions and projected conditions and opportunities along that. And that's sort of, what that is, is we looked at crash data, we looked at access management, we looked at signals and speeds, speed zones and that sort of thing along the facility. Then from that, we looked at recommendations and the end of study, then the cost estimates for the final report. So recommendations criteria. So we have safety, access management, corridor capacity and corridor characteristics. So really, safety looks directly at crashes and sort of overlaps on access management and corridor capacity. Access management sort of looks at, sorry about that, is when I say access management, I look at driveways, intersections, side streets, medians. Really what you're looking at are those conflict points along a corridor where you have a lot of driveways or a lot of intersections and people are weaving in and off the road. And that's important, especially along a corridor that's developed. The corridor capacity, you're really looking at the volume of traffic and the signal light system. Then characteristics, the corridor characteristics are really, you know, your zoning and your population and that, that's really in context of the three. So as far as corridor characteristics, very quickly, I want to go through the segments. Segment one was from old Andrew Johnson Highway to Commerce Boulevard. It's about 1.7 miles, it's a four-lane divided highway with median. Segment two is from Commerce Boulevard to east of North Sugar Hollow. Speeds are a little lower, you go from 50 to 45, it's still a divided highway with grass and median. You have five signalized intersections and two, I think one under construction and one planned. And then segment three is about one and a half miles, you've got 40 mile an hour speed limit, and that's where it transitions to that five-lane cross-section where you have four lanes with a two-way left turn lane and sidewalks.
Is that at Merchant Screen, is that where that one is? With the sidewalks and the...
There are, through that segment, there are sidewalks there, not as in-depth as segment one, I think segment one, two, three, just because of the study. But where, that Merchant Screen area where it's redeveloping and developing, yes, there are sidewalks there also. So just not as in-depth or as many.
What's the width of those sidewalks?
Typically, a sidewalk is five feet. Anything, if you're looking at multi, if you're looking at a greenway trail where you want, you know, multiple pedestrians and bikes, eight foot typically is the minimum. You want 10 feet, this is the rule of thumb, for just pedestrian only, typically it's five feet.
Okay, maybe.
So on characteristics of the corridor, there's a couple of things that sort of popped out at me that I thought was interesting. You know, if you look at zoning, another thing is population along this corridor. If you look at 2014 numbers in segment two, which is the segment that's developing, now, you know, 2014, you're 11,378. 2040, you're looking at almost 17,000, so you're looking at a 50% growth just along the corridor. We're not talking outside the extents of the corridor. And it's, you know, if you look at the whole Lamto region, you're looking at percent growth of 31% and all the other segments at 53. So that gives you an indicator, just when you look at corridor capacity and volume of traffic, that just sort of brings it home to me. Go ahead. And same thing, along the same corridor is employment growth. If you look at segment two, you're looking at 5,200 new jobs or 54% growth. And that's, there again, that's from 2014 to 2040. All segments, you're looking around 49%, which is greater than the region of around 35%. And of course, this is all projected.
So do you do that so that we're building the road to handle the future?
Yes, what you do, you look at these characteristics and you can sort of see what's projected in the future, and that helps you sort of get a feel for what traffic is going to be and development's going to be in that future. So if you think there's, if there's less growth, then when you're looking at projecting traffic numbers and looking at that development, it just gives you a better feel for what's going to happen.
So that's when you come back into us and say you need three lanes or four lanes here?
Yes, ma'am. That goes into it, yes. So existing conditions, and we'll start with, I've got to cheat on my notes a little bit here. Safety, like I said, primarily we look at crash, crashes. So when we look at a crash, we look at crash severity, the type of collision, whether it's a rear end or a side swipe, the weather condition, and was it night or daytime? By evaluating these crashes, and Chief Police understands this because they see a lot of these, is you can sort of tell a story of what's going on in a corridor at an intersection by the type of crashes that are occurring. And also, you can pop out hotspots by seeing where clusters of crashes are happening. Looking at this graph, if you look in the Y-axis or up and down, that's the number of crashes. And if you look at the X-axis, we're going east or west to east. So you can see here that this big spike is at State Route 160 here at Park Boulevard, 58 crashes. And this is three years of crash data. Typically, you use three years, it's from 2016 to 19. We didn't look at 20 because of COVID, just because you've got, you know, anything, any crash data, any kind of traffic data, really, you're looking at 19 and back just because of what happened with COVID. So as you go along east, you can see there's a spike of 48 crashes at Merchant Screen, West Economy, 41 crashes, and Coal Creek Drive, 48 crashes. But that just sort of gives you that broad look of where are your issues? And access management. So we looked at driveways, intersections, median opens and side streets. And I know intersections and side streets are similar, but a side street usually is a T. So it's a, it's a period used drive. So segment one had the lowest number of driveway intersections of a total of 71, which that makes sense because that segment of Andrew Johnson Highway is not as developed. You have more driveways and less development. Segment two has the highest number, which is, that's where your development's occurring, at 195 points, and segment three has 108 points. Then we also looked at capacity. Capacity is the measure of delay or congestion. And what we did is, we had traffic counts at intersections along segment two. We modeled those in a software that models the, how the cars move, you know, throughs, lefts and rights. And also, we have traffic data, you know, volume of traffic that we input. So level, so you have a level of service A through F, A being really good, F being bad. And typically, A through C is considered acceptable, D is starting to get into problems, and E and F, you've got capacity problems. So if you look at this table, we looked at the base year of 2025, we looked at 20, I believe 15 data, we grew that data based on state averages and percent growth. So you have a base year of 2025, then we looked at that growth through 2045. So you can see Merchant's Green Boulevard now is a level of service D, so it's at a point where you have issues. Then in 2045, it's a level of service E. So you already have issues at the intersections and that's, and it's going to be worse. Kidwell Ridge Road, it's C, right now, that's acceptable, but you know, looking at out in 2045, it's E and D. So that's, you're going to have problems there. Sugar Hollow Road, Central Church, White Avenue, you know, right now, they're in the As and Bs, they go to B to Cs, those are in that acceptable range. Now, you also got to remember, a C in Moorestown and a C in Los Angeles, a C you may not like in Moorestown, a small town, you think it's fairly busy, but in Los Angeles, they'll die for that kind of service. You know, it's perspective. So, and I'm from the Maryville-Alcoa area, and I worked for the City of Alcoa a long time before I was with WSP, and you would get, you know, you'd have folks man, this is really horrible traffic. And you know, you have to explain that it's, with this system, it's relative because what's bad traffic in a smaller area is great traffic in a larger city. Then you've got West Economy Boulevard, you're going from a B and D, you know, to a D and E, then Baker, Cold and Pierce are all very good, then Walters Drive, you're in the D and the AM. And also, I should have said, we're looking at AM and PM peaks on each of these columns. So we're looking at morning traffic and evenings. That's when your heaviest traffic is typically, is the AM and the PM peaks. Okay, so we're going to look at recommendations and estimated costs. So segment one, which starts at the county line and goes, I can't remember where it goes, but Commerce Boulevard. Commerce Boulevard. So for short-term recommendations, we say short-term, meaning in the five-year range. Long-term is more in the 25-year range. So for short-term recommendations, at Tabit Kansas Road and the road, it's an offset Greenbrier to the north, we're looking at closing that median at number two, at the number two dot here, and improving the westbound right turn lane here, because what it is, you've got an offset intersection and you have conflicts because of that intersection being offset. So if you close this, this left turner will have to go down and do a U-turn to get back there. But you're reducing crashes and it's a, it's a, it's a less expensive fix than realigning the road, which number four on long-term recommendation is to actually realign Tabit Kansas Road to Greenbrier. And you can see on the short-term one and two, if you combine those, it's around $500,000. Number three, near Lake Shore Drive, ingress egress enhancements to the business on the northwest quarter of the intersection. Here is really on Lake Shore Drive, is improving those left and right through lanes at that intersection. And five for long-term recommendation for Superior Cork Drive is when this area redevelops, is extending that to Lake Shore. And that's in the neighborhood of about 2.3 million dollars. Questions?
This has been committed and budgeted?
This is recommended in planning level costs, so you have a, you can look at what short-term projects you may want to do or long-term and have an idea of how much it's going to cost.
That's about what I thought it was.
These long-term recommendations, is that today's cost or is that long-term recommendation cost?
That's today's cost.
Okay, so likely not the cost then.
But you have to, I mean, as long as you know where it starts, you can expand.
At Commerce where it intersects with West AJ, is Dollar General going to extend that on up into their parking lot? You know, right now, they've put that new intersection in.
Yes.
And they're just dead end right there on the right away. Are they, I know the state's probably not going to do anything there, but is there, I wonder why they put that little piece of asphalt there, you know, unless Dollar General was going to do something.
Dollar General's been asked, there's been some corporate discussion, let us say, it is not yet committed.
I see, okay.
It was a teaser.
So segment two, if you look at number one, it's Meadowwood Drive is improving the median opening. Number two there, State Route 160 is remove the right turn yield condition and fully, and upgrade to a fully signalized intersection. Right there, you've got a yield condition on the right, it's not signalized, and what happens is you've got a lot of rear ends. If you put it into the signalized system and tighten it up, then you make that intersection safer, and it helps with that access. And number three is Bulldog Lane. That is, I guess there's the McDonald's and...
Zoomers.
Zoomers is realign up to the Toyota dealership entrance and provide access improvements and circulation opportunities. Therefore, as that develops, you can do some frontage roads or side streets internally where you can limit access to, to make to State Route 160 or that. There again, access management is one of those political footballs that the developer wants all the access they can get. But also, on the other hand, you've got to maintain safety and control that access and minimize the amount of points onto the road so you don't have those conflict points. So of course, these are recommendations, but it's that balancing act. And there again, number one is around $150,000. Number two for, let's see, for State Route 160 is around 225, then the Bulldog Lane is in the 1.2 million dollar range.
Is there enough room there to do a frontage road? You recall that we discussed this with T-Dot, there was some plans on the table to make some of those improvements that were recommended here, and council opted not to participate. So there is room, it's not ideal, it's not something you would draw if you're starting with a blank sheet of paper, but given what we've got, that's, that, there is a possibility for a frontage right there.
And you will find with access management, if you, in segment one, where you don't have much development, you have an opportunity to holistically look at that and as properties develop, you can plan for access. When you have areas such as in segment one up closer to North, North, Morris Boulevard, where you already have infill, it's much harder to do because you already have businesses there and you sort of have to piecemeal it. And you may have to say, okay, I want to, we want a frontage road, but as this property redevelops, you may have to get easement or maintain an area, it may be a segment of frontage road, it may go to nowhere until the other one redevelops it. But it's, there's no, you know, it's hard to do. And there's no, every community has to sort of pick and choose how they want to do that because every community is different. Does that make sense? This is still on segment two, so number one, short-term recommendations, Howe Road include, is that, conclude that signal, it's part of the coordinated signal system, that way they just communicate. The rest of the signal system through there is already coordinated, you coordinate that system, that way they're communicating together and you get progression of traffic. $30,000. Number two, State Route 66, pavement signal improvements, signage improvements, northbound near US 11. This area here, there's a bank that, there's an entrance there and you've got some left and right turn lanes, that sort of conflict is, look at maybe shortening that or striping it in a manner that helps the driver know as people are going across, it's just, there's a conflict there. Number, let's see, short-term number three, near Manly Circle, closed opening, there's closed opening in front of East Manly Circle or maybe meeting up in front of West Sunset Hills. There's a series of meeting openings, there's one that's really not necessary, it's just closing that, it helps with driver confusion and people using a meeting opening that's not needed.
That was for the fire department?
Back when the park was open.
Fire, there was a fire station there.
And that's, let's see, 250,000, let's see here. Okay, number four, Howe Road, upgrade to a two, standard two-way left turn lane, Howe Road. Here is, you've got all this development in this area, is looking at actually Howe Road and Bellwood Road, they're just two-lane roads, is looking at a three-lane cross-section. That way you get greater capacity and you get cars that are taking less to the right, less into the median and out through traffic. Those are expensive, you know, 6.9 and 5.4 million respectively. Number six is Kidwell Road extends to the south of the line, Manly Street. Is, this is an offset intersection, is look at lining those up eventually. Go ahead. Segment three, and this is where it transitions into the five-lane cross-section where you've got the five lane with the two-way left turn lane, is at Pierce Drive, is modify that to a three-legged signalized intersection. There's very little traffic there, everyone uses the intersection just to the west. Western Avenue is additional signage and pavement markings. That's where, that's where you have, let's see, Western Avenue, you've got that area where folks are trying to go out and the pavement is marked, is just freshen those marks up, do not block intersection. Then on Western Avenue is, what we're recommending there is dead ending, dead ending Western Avenue, looking at a connection to West Morris Boulevard here, and making this a dead end, that way you don't have this, this entrance close to this mega mirror. And that would be about 1.1 million dollars. Then the other improvements are in the 175, you know, number one at Pierce is 175,000. Western Drive, striping around 25. Oh, then West Economy Drive, number three, is add a right turn lane on US 11 to configure access. It's sort of a skewed intersection, is looking at a dedicated right turn lane to get that traffic out of the traffic. Other system enhancements, recommendations and sidewalk additions between State Route 66 and South Sugar Hollow Road along segment two. Improve existing sidewalks and ramps along segment two to meet those current standards. Then also, there's a couple of the bus stop, transit stops, especially at Food City is maybe look at adding some amenities like a shelter, those sort of things that can help people, the heavier used bus stops to help people get out of the weather. And I already talked about access management, I guess very quickly, there again, access management is about eliminating conflict points. Segment one, which is the westernmost segment, the most undeveloped, is you have the opportunity there to holistically look at that section because it's not developed. Segment two is look where you have your best opportunities in areas that aren't developed and in areas of redevelopment is just try to, what you want to do is eliminate access as much as possible and combine them, look at joint permanent easements, that sort of thing. And segment three is the same thing, is you just have to sort of piecemeal that as you go. And that's it. Any questions?
What's the next step?
The next step is, we have the draft report to Rich, he's reviewing it, and T-Dot is will make those changes, then you will have that report with these recommendations and those costs. And I guess as you...
Yeah, it's, this is kind of the base starting point moving forward. This is our basis for arguments for funding for projects in the future from T-Dot that we might participate in. We would seek other projects to address these concerns. But by going through and looking at the corridor and identifying where the pinch points are and kind of how you can address them, that gives us a firmer foundation to go for solutions down the road.
And we have a priority matrix also that sort of rewrites what we think are the most important ones to look at.
Can a frontage road be behind McDonald's and Zoomers?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, when I, I guess when I say a frontage road, it could be, it could be a rear access road. You know, a lot of times a frontage road, you don't want it too close because as you come off, you don't have enough, you know, space between the main route and that. So a lot of times, it's a, you can say a rear road or, you know, it's just something that's further back. And a lot of times, that's the best way to do it. Because not only are you serving the property that's fronting the main road, you can front, you can serve the property that's second row behind that. So yes, yeah, when I say frontage road, it's loosely turned.
And you have, I know you're the expert in this field, but when you come up to, and I think you mentioned that somewhere, where you would have a left turn, right turn, three lanes.
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't have the situation like we do at Cumberland and Morris at CBS where you're stuck in the left lane if somebody in front of you wants to turn left. So you're going to prevent that if we're, is that what you, that's what you do when you look at these intersections?
Yes, and you, well, the areas I recommend two-way left turn lanes are some of the side streets off of 11E when you have a lot of development. Now, of course, you know, when you recommend two-way left turn lanes, you also have to look at certain intersections that it may not be appropriate at certain spots or you've got access that is too close. So you know, I'm holistically recommending that, but you also have to use engineering judgment as you have development.
And this planning study being in conjunction with the resurfacing project that T-Dot has ongoing now on West AJ, we were able to leverage some of these recommendations into that project as they were making development. So for example, the closing of the median there at the old fire station four, that was accomplished based on this study within the project that they already had underway. So it's a foundational thing to build for the future, gives you an idea of where we, and we really rushed it, he's got a great deal more detail that he can go into if you had the time, but it is a good, good basis for making decisions in the future and to seek additional state funding.
So basically, is it Kidwell's Ridge or does it go past Kidwell's Ridge? Unless if it's going to the fire station.
Yeah, it goes from the county line to Walters.
This is the, could you do a frontage road behind, let's see, Buddy's, Cookout, Pals, that way, take them out on...
One can be done, but it'd be very, very costly. You remember the cost was like 6 million, something like that?
Oh, you looked into it, yeah.
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 We had a traffic team, and that was one of the projects that was recommended to do, doing a frontage road there.
I've noticed on, from Morris on down to probably White Avenue, somewhere in that area, that's very congested in the afternoon. Is there anything in the works to alleviate some of that?
The whole thing, excuse me, in that area, or do frontage roads or access roads, it can't be done because they'd be expensive. Then you're cutting out, trying, basically doing whatever the side turn lanes. Trying to, or to make traffic keep moving free flow basically. We kind of backed away from that area to go into detail. We did more detail on Section Two because that's where most of development's going on.
And there's an opportunity to do things before they get set up.
Yes, it's, it's much easier if you have sort of a blank slate than when you already have infill because it's, you know, you're looking at affecting business property. And that's where I say if you, as things redevelop, sometimes you can try to piecemeal. But it's not perfect because it takes a long time.
Is there anything that you could do? Because I, I have complaints from people about Pals because they're, they're back up and they got that right lane down through there at lunchtime many days.
I would have to look at the, the one thing I'd have to do, if you hadn't looked up, possibly getting like a turn lane in. When I would do that, you had to buy additional right away. And just a little bit of right away, we got by the tire choice. It'll be extremely costly. White Pals, that's where that access road in the back of the property would make more sense. You can type by White Avenue, Economy. The natural extension to do would be extending Sandstone Drive to Economy Road back to there. That would help mitigate some of that traffic as well.
Years, years ago, they looked at Pedding, a road from down on, I guess that was Merchant's Green Road there. Well, where the hospital's proposing, they're on up to Morris Boulevard. But it got too expensive.
Exactly.
Is that completely scratched? I mean, that would take a lot of.
I think we can probably, it'll have to be done a piecemeal.
Yeah.
Probably Sugar Hollow Road be the next aspect that could be done.
Right.
Then Sugar Hollow Road back to Morris, that's where it gets really expensive because not only you have to just building the road, but you also have to build a bridge to get the railroad tracks to like by there as well.
Originally, that was going, Merchant's Green was going to be not there, but at Kidwell's Ridge and come out and connect to veterans. And then that got switched, is what happens there. What about at Pals, if they gave you some, some of the frontage there? I know you would need maybe longer, but would that help at all to have a little bit of a, a jut in?
If anyone donates property, it'll be, it would be extremely helpful.
You'd have to have the one next to it.
But that's it.
That's that auto story.
Generally, you want at least a hundred and fifty feet for access rate, like this, right?
So I guess the idea today was to let you be aware that there is an ongoing planning process, give you some idea of, of some of the areas of concerns and potential solutions. But to let you know that it's, it's an ongoing discussion that we're, we're trying to make sure you're aware of. Rich, I guess in the region, this corridor study is coming to a close. There's a couple of others that are kind of in the pipeline, I guess. We've got one on Cumberland.
South Cumberland's the next one we're working on. T-Dot had put cameras out to look at traffic turning movements. That's just been collected. CDM Smith will be doing that project. It's ITS signal coordination on Cumberland Street, Buffalo Trail, that whole corridor, as well as looking at Road Diet Section. Consultants just now got the contracts underway. So we're expecting to have kickoff meetings hopefully within a month. Haven't heard back yet when they're going to start this. But then we'll be putting meetings on that, and I'll let everyone know when that's going to happen.
So that one's funded moving. To the west on this corridor, Jeff County was looking at, at doing a continuation of this.
A continuation and still waiting to hear back from Jeff County, Jeff City. How soon am I pushing on this?
But transportation is a regional problem, regional concern, is going to take regional solutions. So, but hopefully you found this worthwhile. We can get you the report when it's finalized. You can look at it in more detail at your, at your leisure. But it is a vital corridor for us. We need to make sure that it works as well as it can. And we need to make good decisions along the corridor that we don't impact negatively where we have opportunities, where we can have things like frontage roads and make it work better.
I want to follow up on what Ken was saying. Yesterday, I was coming out of the Safelite Auto Park right across from Ingalls. And I, I sat there because, you know, the red light is not aligned. But I don't know what was happening at three forty-five and where all the cars were coming from that were coming down Kidwell's Ridge to turn. Is there, is there some type of a factory back there that I don't know about? I mean, it was, it was a steady stream of cars and they weren't all coming from the grocery store.
That's just a busy intersection.
Busy intersection.
But I, it's, it's residential back in there. But from there, and it was, it was bumper to bumper going east and west from the signal at Merchant's Green all the way into town.
And everything that could have happened, there might have been accidents somewhere in the west end, so to avoid that access that may, and some of the back roads come out to Kidwell's Ridge, like Cameron Road out to Kidwell's Ridge and come down that way. I've seen that happen before.
What do you think your major's improvements are? Where, where, I know everything is good, is what you're saying here. But what is, what are the, the three big things that you think you've helped us with on this project right here?
The biggest thing would be on the, basically Howe Road, Merchant's Green, Bellwood Road. That's where the biggest development is starting to grow right now. Planning access roads, connecting with basically Bellwood over towards Kidwell's Ridge, trying to do that intersection high end. That would probably be, that would help out traffic tremendously in that area right now.
Does that take out that no U-turn in there? There's a, you know, right in front of, I think, is it Bellwood or is it Howe? Is it Bellwood Road?
Bellwood. There's a couple of other different things being looked at. Possible like a J-turn.
Yes. On the west, on the west end.
But yeah, if we get additional development in that corridor, I think that we're on a path toward signalization of Bellwood. I think that's, that's in the foreseeable future. But having that access road to tie, to be able to take Kidwell's Ridge all the way back to Merchant's Green and have, have that parallel path would, would help a lot to be able to go from, between developments.
I can't, tell me how we're going to get Kidwell's Ridge to Merchant's Green? Oh, you're talking about the, the eleven. You're not talking, I thought you were going to do a cross-country something else.
No, no.
Okay. Thought there was a shortcut in there.
One of the other things we'll talk about during the traffic team was possibly doing an improvement from Cherokee Crossing Development where you've got all these Marcos Pizza and all that going and try to possibly extend that road. Kind of circle back over towards Kidwell's Ridge and do improvements on Kidwell's Ridge as well. So try to mitigate some of the traffic going straight down to Kidwell's Ridge to eleven.
So part of this is dreaming, part of it's planning, part of it is a way to get, get improvements in the future. Again, we'll get you a copy of the report, but we appreciate your, your attention. That's all we have for this work session unless you have additional questions or comments. Well, thank you very much. WSP's been great to work with and we're, we're excited.